Well, it depends when the meeting is. If the council passes something in enough time for staff to get things ready for Phyllis by Tuesday, then we generally do. If we can't, then we don't. Or if there's something that slows us down.
Yes, sir. Did you have another question, Rick? Okay. The other Rick. Rick Prather.
Clarification, Chief did call me on this particular bill, so if he does call me prior to a lot of, if he wants to get on the agenda, he will call me and ask me to be, if it's okay, if I'll be a sponsor and I give my nod. And then he passes it on to Phyllis.
Yeah, sometimes it does happen where we can get it to Phyllis, but the agenda meeting doesn't happen till afterwards. So while we try to avoid putting it on the agenda before the committee passes it, it does occasionally happen. But usually, we try to call the sponsor of the bill and make sure it's okay with them first.
Okay. Anything else, Rick? Good to go. Anyone else before we move on to bills pending? All right, at this point in time, we'll have third reading of Bill 2013-131.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri levying and assessing a special tax bill against particular lots and tracts of land fronting and abutting the 1,200 and 1,300 blocks of Moreland Avenue in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the improvement of said curb and sidewalk.
Matt?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is the council approving a tax bill for our Moreland Avenue project. We had 27 property owners along that stretch of roadway, and 11 of those are represented in this tax bill. The total of the tax bills, just over $8100. If you remember, the project was about $140,000 overall. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on Matt on 2013-131? Mr. Henry?
Thank you. And Matt, just for clarification, this was a cost-sharing project with the neighbors in the area.
Right, they paid $10 a front foot, and that's represented by these tax bills here.
Any other questions on 131? Debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2013-132.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the Personnel Policy Manual by amending Article 12 Vacation Leave and creating a new Section 14-14 Shared Leave to assist employees with serious health conditions or events.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a substitute, but I'll just describe both at the same time, if that's okay. This, again, it's been discussed in the past, but came about again because of Catherine O'Neil and then a couple of other employees as well who had similar incidences. But this follows policies that have been adopted by their places, including the state, where it allows employees to donate vacation into a pool, and then that vacation pool can be utilized by a person in need. And we've got the rules and regulations here, and I'll go into as much detail as you like. It is vacation-only and not sick leave. The only change in the substitute is that we originally had denation shall be made between October 1st and October 31st of each year, so that the administrative people don't have to do this constantly and kind of prepare themselves to do these once a year. The change makes it to the 15th, so it's October 1st to the 15th. The reason being, it allows us to get everything in order from October 15th to, basically, two weeks to process the paperwork. The other change here to note is that, right now, when you hit your maximum accrual level, what's the limits on vacations? 360? That's, well, 240 for non-exempt, 360. So you hit that, and you just lose it if you don't use it. So it kind of, in theory, encourages people, when they get to the top, to use their vacation and burn it off. This would say you'll keep it up until November 1st, in which case, then it resets to your max. But what that allows people to do then is donate their vacation into the pool, rather than use it up and burn it or lose it. I'd argue it actually has a positive effect on us, because rather than people taking vacation, they'll actually be here because they gave up their vacation, so that's the good side of it for the city. But ultimately, it's a chance for employees to help their fellow employees in times that are difficult. It only kicks in when someone's used up all their sick leave and all their vacation leave. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions on 2013-132?
Okay. I'd actually highlighted several things that I had questions about, but I'm going to refer to one of them here, because you prompted me to by your comment. I know that the city has tried, and I know it's the intention of employees and others, to try to make this cost-neutral to the city.
Mm-hmm.
But I wonder if there might be one place where we failed to make it cost-neutral. And I'm not sure if there's anything you can do about it. I'm not sure there's even anything that we should do about it.
Okay.
But in the case of an employee that is maxed out, would there not be a cost incurred by the city, potentially, if that maxed-out person donated whatever it would take to, I don't know what you accrue per year, but let's say it's 20 days a year. So I'm maxed out, and I donate 20 days, and then I begin to accrue vacation again. And so, in effect, that 20 days that is donated is an additional cost to the city if it's used, because it allows a maxed-out employee to begin to accrue again.
That could be. So, are you saying, instead of just losing it?
Right.
Yeah, that is true. If you've accrued to the top, and you just decide you're not going to take any vacation, you just lose it. This would allow you, instead of losing it, to throw it into the pool.
You could, in theory, you know, a long-term employee, someone that's been with the city for a significant time, could, in fact, donate 20 days every year, we'll say, and actually not donate any of their personal time. I would assume they never took vacation, you know.
Yeah, right.
But I'm just saying that, potentially, we've tried to keep it cost-neutral to the city. That is one hole, I guess, that I see. Now, whether it's anything we ought to even be concerned about or not, I don't know, but it is something that occurred to me. Another thing I noticed, language here says that, and I'll have to find it, it says that an employee, in order to be eligible, an employee must apply for the Family Medical Leave Act.
Yep.
Leave. What is the rationale behind that?
Each year, the federal government requires that you be authorized four months, essentially, it's 120 days, whatever, something like that, available for major medical issues, essentially. And you don't have to pay them for it. You don't have to, all you have to do is hold their job. So if they qualify for FMLA leave, they get so many days per year, and depending on how you do the calendar, it can roll over, but it's more complicated than you say. It's just a way to make sure that they are filing for FMLA when they should. There's no loss to the employee necessarily not to file for FMLA, it just protects their job. But if they're not in, you know, danger of losing their job, the city needs to make sure that they use their FMLA leave as well, because, you know, eventually, someone misses enough time, you need to let them go for the good of the city itself. So, in my mind, it's just a tracking issue to make sure they're filing their FMLA leave.
Okay. And then there was another question I had. It said that benefits cease upon the following conditions. Employee or someone on their behalf makes an application for workers' compensation benefits from or relating to the qualifying event or receives any such workers' compensation benefit. So the act of just applying causes you to lose your benefit?
Yes, and I'll tell you why. Workers' compensation is injuries that occur at work, and the city's obligated to pay for those benefits. So you're double-dipping if you're drawing workers' comp benefits and grabbing from the shared leave pool. Application means, because you could file for a comp and not actually get it. But if you're filing for it, then you're saying, well, this is really a work-related injury. And so I intend to attempt to gather benefits from a work-related injury, and this is just for those injuries that aren't, in fact, work-related.
Okay, all right. And, let's see. Down here, intermittent use of shared leave.
Mm-hmm.
It says that employees receiving a medical release for return to work on a part-time basis can continue to use this. So if they're working a half a day, they can also take a half a day of...
Yeah. The scenario that contemplates is kind of the chemotherapy scenario.
Right.
Where you're able, you've used up all your sick leave and your off time, but you have to go into chemo for half a day, or you, you know, you take chemo and you can't work for the rest of the day, whatever it is. I mean, that was the scenario we were envisioning.
Would you anticipate that, and there's probably not a thing wrong with this either, but would you anticipate that one employee could use all of your bank, and a second employee might not have any available to them? Would there be any kind of...
We contemplated that a bit at the staff level and talked about, an earlier version of this said he could never take more than one-third of the amount, and decided that the risk was relatively small, and that we included in this a provision to say that the city administrator, upon need, can make a call for additional hours. So although we contemplated only doing it one time a year, if the bank got low, because someone, for example, we've got three people right now who may be able to draw from this, if the bank got low, we could put out a call and employees could donate. And yes, if, you know, maybe one employee has a terrible accident, uses it all up, well, you know, this is kind of a gift scenario, so if not everyone can share in it, it's a shame. But we've got a provision to address it.
And you just answered my last question. You had established a date for contributing, but you also have the flexibility of issuing a call for donations throughout the year?
That's correct, for just such a scenario as you described. Could be that some event depletes it.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 2013-132? Seeing none? No debate? We have a substitute, I believe, that wants to get introduced? I'm hearing that?
Yeah, and that substitute was just changed to October 15th instead of October 31st, cutoff date.
Okay. Is there a motion to take up the substitute?
Shall move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Take up substitute and discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of taking up, or voting on the substitute as is in amending the original motion? Please say aye.
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 Is that unanimous, Counselor?
I think so.
All right, motion passes. Now, we'll vote on the original bill as substituted. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the informal calendar and Bill 2013-120. Mr. Schulte, what's your intention, sir?
Like to remove Bill 2013-120 for consideration by the council.
Okay, at this point in time, excuse me, 2013-120, we'll come back on our original calendar here. And I also see a substitute here. Is there a motion?
Thank you. I'd like to substitute Bill 2013-120.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, we'll take up Bill 2013-120 as substituted. Drew, could you tell us about the substitute, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The substitute, we got a call from a Board of Realtors, and they had, they had some, they took a look at it and sent the bill on to their corporate counselor, or some of their counsel that they hire, to take a look at it, sent us a couple of suggestions. Took most of them, rejected one or two of them, and they were fine with that. Briefly, they're not too, you know, particularly deep or anything, but they had some suggestion that under A5, when it said, that when economic developments reach an appropriate level, then the city can ask to look through the background, essentially, in the business acumen of the developer asking for the economic incentive. And they felt like, you know, the term "appropriate amount" was nebulous and unclear, so I changed that to just say, we may require the developer to, we may look into their background and that kind of stuff. So just, instead of having a threshold level, we just said that we have the ability to do that. They had some concern that, under the CID bonding, the policy said that we would not approve bonds that required, I'm sorry, CID plans that required bonding. And the comment was, well, why not allow bonding so long as the city's full faith and credit is not behind it? In other words, if the CID district wants to bond, why not let them? So I did change this to say, you know, we're opposed to CID's that request bonding that requires the city's full faith and credit, but if they can do it on their own, you know, go ahead. Can't read my own writing here. Oh, the, under TIDDD, the policy indicates that they should, using the word "should," enter into a development agreement with the city, whereas the CID and the TIF said that the developer shall enter into a development agreement. So I've changed that so that the TID is now a "shall" as well. One concept that they did reject is that they, they suggested that, in the CID section of it, it says that one of the members, I think, it was two, two of the members shall be appointed by the city council, and they felt like it was, that would be difficult to achieve, because the statute talks about CID members being residents of the district. However, I think what they didn't quite look back at the definition, and basically, the property owners can have a representative on the board as well. So technically, what happens is just the example. We've got farmers, we appointed one member to that CID board, and what they would just do is sign a document saying, yes, we appoint the City of Jefferson as our representative to appoint someone on the board. So there's a technical reason we did that. So that was really the crux of the substitute. The rest of it, again, I know I went through it a number of times, but basically, it just sets out a policy so that the public knows what our plan, what our policies are for when we give TID, CDD, CIDs, TDDs, the TIFs, IRBs, the apple soup, the apple, the alphabet soup of economic development. And it also tells developers what to expect, and, you know, it just, it's open and protects us, in my mind. Worked on this a very long time, I'd say well over a year ago is when we started this, and went through several months of finance and did work sessions several months of council, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Feel like we've pretty thoroughly vetted it in the community and hope it's a good policy.
Any discussion on 120 as amended? Seeing none, debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we will have, on the informal calendar currently, is Bill 2013-124. Mr. Mahalovich, what?
I would like to keep that on the informal.
Okay, and it has a little bit of time left, no problem there. Moving on to resolutions, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion on Resolution 2013-43.
Shall move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Reading, please.
A resolution authorizing a cost share with Coal County for wastewater repair, replacement, and extension.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, this resolution allows us to participate in Coal County roadway contracts for Frog Hollow and Business 50 West with our sanitary sewer funds. The Frog Hollow job has about $266,000 worth of sanitary sewer work to be done there. The, back when St. Mary's was going in, the city upgraded its line to serve that area, but we stopped short near this bridge, knowing that it would be replaced in the near future. So, unknowing where it might be, we went ahead and stopped there, so this picks that back up and does that. On Business 50, we recognize that we'd like a crossing near one of their box culverts, and that's about a $13,000 deal. This resolution allows our finance department to be able to cut a check to Coal County once that work is completed.
Any questions for Matt on 2013-43? Seeing none, any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Next, we'll, it looks like there's a motion here for Resolution 2013-44.
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded by Carlos. Reading, please.
A resolution concurring with Coal County's selection of a contractor for the Frog Hollow Road Improvements Project.
Matt?
Thank you. This is a city-county cooperative project, although the road's in the city, we have an agreement with the county, they'll actually bid and award the construction contract and inspect that for us. So they've taken those bids. JCI was the low bidder for this job. The total job's $1,377,788. That does include the roughly $266,000 of wastewater work we just talked about in the previous resolution. Part of this, being a cooperative project, will split the roadwork out of the sales tax funds for the half-cent capital improvement sales tax. The city's share would obviously be half of that roadwork, so that's just over $555,000. That money comes out of the half-cent sales tax, it was budgeted at a million. If you recall, we had a much larger project there, scaled back. And then, now we're in the process of doing the traffic study on Edgewood, so any of these funds, you know, would be for unforeseen item change orders, things like that. But it's possible that, once we complete the traffic study along Edgewood, there may be a project where we'll be able to cooperate with the county on and fund then, but that's yet to come.
Any questions for Matt on 2013-44? Seeing none, any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll entertain a motion on 2013-45.
Shall move.
It's been moved and seconded. Reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri to apply for Economic Development Assistance Programs Grant.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution would authorize staff to apply for an Economic Development Assistance Grant that would fund public works and economic development facilities. If awarded, the grant would assist with the proposed US Highway 54 Stadium Boulevard Access Capacity and Safety Improvements Project. It's also associated with the Capital Region Medical Center expansion. There are three funding cycles in this grant. The first one comes up in March, there's a second one in June, and a third one in October. And the good news is, if we apply in March and are turned down, we'll get suggestions on how to improve the application so that we have a better chance of getting awarded in June or October. So there is a grant, local match requirement, and we'll identify where that local source will come from if we are awarded the grant. But there's also already been funds awarded or allocated to this project, such as the Surface Transportation Project STP funds been awarded through CAPO, and there's also some capital improvement program funds associated with this project. In addition, it's important, I think, to note that MoDOT announced that they've suspended their local cost share program, so we're hoping that we would get awarded this grant, so that would supplement the funds that have already been allocated to this, to this particular project.
Any questions for Janice on 2013-45? Mr. Henry?
Thank you. And Janice, that's strictly a cash match, nothing in kind?
There may be some in kind that's allowed with this project. We'd have to specify that in our, in the application, but I would assume that most of it would be cash match.
Thank you.
Bob?
One thing that seems really beneficial about this particular grant is, it really is like new money. I mean, we've, we've already committed to spend a significant amount of money on this project, and so that, a grant really enhances what we've already committed to spend. And I guess, in theory, could even reduce, other than the fact that the project's large enough that we're probably going to be scrambling to find enough money to pay for it anyway. But, so, unlike some grants, it seems like that a commitment to, to receiving a grant is actually committing you to spend additional monies. We've already committed to spend the money, this is just going to really be a help to us if we can get it.
It would be.
Any other questions on 2013-45? Mr. Carlos?
Janice, what is the maximum amount of the grant that we can possibly receive?
I think the maximum amount is $3 million.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing no more questions. Any debate on 2013-45? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a new resolution tonight, Resolution 2013-47. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hussy. Reading, please.
Resolution supporting Missouri Senate Bill 674.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we had a couple of versions of this. Councilwoman Turgeon and I spoke on Friday, and so I didn't get to work on it till this morning when I was in the brown bag. In fact, I had the wrong number. But Senator Kehoe has introduced a bill that does, it's a state legislature that does two things. One, it authorizes essentially food and liquor to be sold at the, at the big house, the big gray house up hill. But a second part of that section also allows alcohol and food to be sold at MSP. The reason it's there is because of our contract with the CVB and our agreement with the state, wherein we put our money in to repair the MSP buildings, and as a result, we've got a long-term lease at CVB. And one of the issues we talked about at the time was that we'd have more, more events at MSP through this, and a kind of a hope that we could maybe have some events that serve alcohol. Obviously, having alcohol at the, at the MSP will bring in, will draw certain other events that we couldn't otherwise have. And Senator Kehoe, in partially in response to that, introduced this bill to help us out. So Councilwoman Turgeon indicated we probably ought to support this bill, it was coming up this week for hearing, and so that's what this resolution does.
All right, thank you. Any other questions of the council? Sean?
Mr. Hilbert, do you recall in our contract with the state, what authority does the CVB have to sell food items as it currently stands?
It referenced that, but I can't remember the exact language.
I think it allowed it, didn't it?
It allowed it, I'm 99% sure, but I can't remember if there was a caveat to it or not. I'm pretty sure it was, it allowed...
I think it may have had to have...
That was certainly the intent.
...approval or something, but I think you addressed it.
We did, I just can't remember exactly how the language reads.
The reason that I'm asking is that the last paragraph of the bill states that the Commissioner of Administration shall have the sole authority to enter into one or more contracts with vendors for the sale of items in food and alcohol. So would this trump our current contract for the CVB to sell items?
Gotcha. No, in fact, that was probably, part of the intent was to expound on what we've got. So I believe the commission already has the ability to lease out that space. This has actually given them the ability to also lease it out for alcohol purposes.
Drew, I didn't have a chance to read this, but did this, the bill itself, does this also open up the opportunity for, like, a coffee type?
Well, in theory, it does, because...
Deal at MSP?
It talks about having the...
Now, that was something that Senator Kehoe had mentioned the last time we were over there, I thought.
Yeah. OA has the ability to lease that out to the vendors, and one of the vendors is CVB.
Sure, okay. Ms. Turgeon?
And on that note, too, it does say for events. So there could be some of the daily operations that will occur, but this is more of an event-type-based thing, like in the fall, whenever we have the event that happens there at MSP, and then it usually comes to the council for approval and resolution, since it's partly owned by the city. As the council liaison to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, when I heard this was coming forward, I believe this Wednesday at the Capitol, I saw it as a great opportunity for us to be supportive of something that would help the city. And anytime we can make the MSP site a little more accessible for events and for the public, I think it's a really good thing. And I did speak with Diane at the CVB just to make sure they are very supportive of it as well. So, kind of gives us a chance. We don't often get to have a voice heard at the Capitol, but it shows that we, as a city, do support what they're trying to do, which will help us in the long run as well in promoting our Capitol and the prison site. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Turgeon. Any other comments or debate on 2013-47? Mr. Scrivner?
I just wanted to point out, is my reading of this is...
I just wanted to point out, is, my reading of this is that this does not grant exclusive, any type of exclusivity to the CVB, so...
Sure.
Any contract, I mean, it would permit the Commissioner to enter into a contract with any vendor.
Yep. Yeah, that's true. And part of it is, you know, they intend to do some fundraising to help the Capitol building itself, and they may also have the fundraisers at MSP. They can certainly utilize that as well, but we're not exclusive on that.
Okay, any other questions on 2013-47, our debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next we'll move on to presentations from the gallery on other topics, which I don't think anyone signed up for. Is that correct? Anyone here that wants to speak? Mr. Brown? It's not every day. Mr. Brown? At least I got that. Thank you for the kind wave. Council and staff discussion of presentation topics, or anything from earlier? Mr. Henry?
And actually, this isn't from earlier, but I just wanted to commend our, our, our Public Works staff on the job that they did Friday. Even, I know them in the county had actually put salt down before we got that, that weather overnight. So they continue to show, show our city how, how good they work together with the county and how well they do for our city. So I just want to say, Matt, thank you and thank your staff.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carlos?
I know that this past weekend, I know the mayor and I had the opportunity to travel to Chicago, and I will say that the roads there were, were terrible, so...
They were.
As I, as I come back here, I hear the good things that, that our county and city has done on the road. So I can also say, I want to compliment and say thank you as well, too.
I share that, Councilman. Uh, yes, sir. Bob?
I, I planned to say something as well, and, and I don't want to just pile on here, Matt, and, and get your head too swollen, but I, I did, I did, as, as a lot of you know, I do a, a radio show on Sunday morning, and we pointed out on Sunday morning that when I left the house on Boonville Road, the, the street was clear. And when I got to 179, which is a responsibility of MoDOT, it was ice and snow covered all the way to Edgewood. And when I got to Edgewood, that street was clear. And I understand the difficulty that MoDOT has in, in, with funding and so on and so forth. But I, I still think that the citizens of Jefferson City, they know what a good job you do, and, and we want to thank you and, and, and extend our appreciation to those crews that are out there starting in the middle of the night and working all night. So, thanks a lot for what you do.
All right, any other comments? Carrie?
Thank you. I'm not sure if we have a policy for canceling meetings. I know I have admin Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 5th. If the public schools are canceled, would it be right for me to go ahead and say now? If JC public schools are called off, I haven't seen the extent of the forecast.
By the way, they are called off for tomorrow. Their, Councilman, former Councilman Weber texted me earlier and said that...
So I don't know if there are any meetings tomorrow. I know Wednesday morning, we have Old Town at 7:30, and we have admin at 8:00.
I don't know what we did in, in the past, Drew. We're shooting from the hip tonight, but...
Certainly, share. I mean, we can, if you want to cancel it...
I would almost assume if schools were canceled Wednesday, that we ought to be, the two meetings early in the morning...
Especially if they're early.
...but it's probably a good thing to maybe do that.
I know in the, I do know in the past, we have had council meetings, like for instance, if the public schools were closed today and things cleared up today, we might go ahead and have a meeting tonight, but we're all adults, and we mostly drive for ourselves.
Just in case for the five of you that are on admin, if for some reason, if there is no school Wednesday, let's go ahead and, just for safety of employees as well, not get out that morning.
Any particular school, Carrie, or just...
Jeff City Public Schools, let's say. And should we say the same for Old Town? I guess Janice would make that call.
Chairman Freeman already made the call for the Old Town meeting, that there, that it was canceled.
It is canceled for Wednesday. Okay.
Right. So... It'll be rescheduled. They'll have their meeting next week, I believe.
Okay, thank you for that announcement, and we'll see how it goes then Wednesday for admin, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments under 19? Seeing none. Any new business? Seeing none. Any unfinished business? Seeing none. At this point in time, under 22, we'll call for approval of the January 21st closed session minutes. Moved by Hussy, second by? By Ralph. Ralph got in there at the last second. All right, all those in favor, please say, oh? No or no?
Roll call and close session.
I was getting ready to say, all those in favor, roll call, please. And I want the clock to show that. Can we take that back off the, off the original record? Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
All right, guys, have a safe night. Don't forget to watch Jay Leno tonight. Jefferson City will be on national TV. At this point in time, we are officially adjourned.